Brattleboro Select Board meeting of Tuesday, July 22, 2025 to order. We had, this is a regular meeting, and we had an executive session at 5:15 and no decisions were made. So I'm going to bring this meeting to order. John, does anyone know of any adjustments to the agenda that would be necessary?
Nope.
Great. And at the executive session, I asked John if the meeting was properly warned, and he assured me that it had been. So let's approve the minutes from July 8th and July 15th. Would anyone like to make a motion? Yes.
I move that we approve the, that the select board approves the minutes from July 8th and 15th.
Great. Isaac has made a motion to approve the minutes of July 8th and 15th. All select board members in agreement, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Great. That's five zero. And chair's remarks. I have a couple. First, I'm, I'm in constantly endeavoring to make sure this meeting is conducted properly, and I want to redouble my efforts to have a three-minute timeline for all the speakers. And you can help. You can help by understanding that there is a three-minute limit and help me and work with me to make sure that no one speaks more than that. And I have two items that are, let's call them the free ice cream items. Following the success of last year's summer block party at the Common, the Brattleboro Police Department and partners will be bringing back the celebration again this year. Join the Brattleboro Police Department during Community Connection Night, scheduled for August 6th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Harmony Lot and along Elliott Street. And this is a family event that will feature free food served by the Brattleboro Fire Department, free ice cream for all children in attendance, a bounce house, a dunk tank where you can dunk your favorite police officer, a touch-a-truck area, games, music, a mini petting zoo, and much more. And the second item is, the Vermont Covered Bridge Society is planning a special evening event at the Creamery Covered Bridge during Covered Bridge Week. On Thursday, August 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., visit the covered bridge at 500 Western Avenue, admire the flowers, and have a unique opportunity to view covered bridges of Southern Wyndham County, Vermont, a 30-minute film by Philip Gattonby, which will be shown on a continuous loop. Attendees are encouraged to bring their own chairs to enjoy the screening, and as a special treat, free ice cream will be provided, which was donated by the Brattleboro Park and Rec Department, and the Brattleboro Elks Club, and served by the Brattleboro Garden Club. And don't miss this chance to celebrate Vermont's covered bridge heritage in Brattleboro. And John, I'll leave it to you for further remarks.
Yep, I have a few comments tonight. I wanted to mention that on Thursday, July 10th, when the day camp was wrapping up their swim time at Living Memorial Park, and they were heading out to lunch, one of the campers tripped and fell into the pool in water over their head. The camper was fully clothed with a backpack on, but due to the quick response from Abby Henry, Lizzie Leclerc, and Evelyn Moody, staff was able to get this child safely to the side of the pool without further incident. This situation could have turned out much differently if it wasn't for the quick response and teamwork of these three staff members. So really wanted to acknowledge their, their work there. That's, that's really great. The Fire Department recently received a thank you from the Keene Fire Department for providing a ladder truck and staffing support while they honored their fallen firefighter over in Keene, Lieutenant Cooper. This gesture of solidarity reflects the professionalism and readiness of our department. Thank you to the Select Board for your continued support, which enables us to serve both our town and our neighbors with distinction. The Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services Systems extended their gratitude for EMS Superintendent Fritz's outstanding instruction during the pediatric ready caring for the critically ill child and pediatric tracheostomy care and management courses. Superintendent Fritz received exceptionally high evaluation marks and enthusiastic feedback from both BLS and, from both basic life support and advanced life support clinicians. Further demonstrating his dedication and professionalism, we're so grateful to EMS Superintendent Fritz.
And he's here in the room, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yes. The town of Brattleboro, oh, there's so, everyone driving around, you'll see lots of public works, projects going on around town, as well as state road projects going on around town. And we'd like to remind residents and visitors, particularly of the state's ongoing resurfacing work. This, this week, work will continue on Route 9 and Route 5, which includes Western Ave, High Street, and Canal Street. During the, the hours that they're working there, particularly at nighttime, flaggers will be present to direct one-way alternating traffic through the construction zones. Motorcyclists are particularly advised to use caution because it, they're resulting in grooved and uneven pavement prior to paving, and that, so they'll, you'll come across that as well as manhole covers and other items in the road. It's, it's a tough, hot summer to get through all this, but in the end, we are going to have much better paved roads through much of the town, and that is the benefit to look forward to this. And I appreciate everyone's patience in getting through the construction. In addition to traffic impacts, there will also be parking impacts, and it will be unavailable on Western Ave, High Street, and Canal Street from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So in the evening overnight, parking will be unavailable on Western Ave, High Street, and Canal Street while they're doing this paving work. The state contractor will place electronic message boards every night to indicate the specific locations where parking restrictions may apply. Please note that there will not be a general parking ban on these streets. Restrictions will only be in effect in areas where construction is, is scheduled for that The Parking Enforcement Office will be temporarily relocating this summer from the Transportation Center, where you may be used to visiting with Carol Colum there, to the Brattleboro Municipal Center to make way for renovations in the Transportation Center. The Parking Enforcement Office will be closed on Wednesday, July 30th, and Thursday, July 31st. During this time, the public will not be able to make transactions for parking. Online payment for parking fees will still be available at brattleboro.gov, and travel permits will be available to purchase at the Brattleboro Police Station temporarily at 62 Black Mountain Road. Purchases made at the police station must be made with check or cash with exact change, and parking permits will be unavailable to purchase on July 30th and 31st. While the Parking Enforcement Office is closed, parking enforcement will still be in effect, and fees for parking will still apply. On Friday, August 1st, the Parking Enforcement Office will reopen at its new temporary location on the first floor of the Municipal Center here at 230 Main Street in Brattleboro. Customers may pay at the window located across the hall from the Assessor's Office on the first floor, Suite 101. Parking enforcement will be housed in the Municipal Center while renovations to the Transportation Center are ongoing, and that's estimated to be completed by November. Last announcement, at the end of this week, the town will be mailing ballots to property owners in the Downtown Improvement District. Brattleboro Town Ordinance Chapter 15 requires that property owners in the Downtown Improvement District vote once every five years, beginning in 2025, as to whether to continue the Special Assessment District. The vote shall be advisory to the Select Board. Property owners in the Downtown Improvement District will receive a ballot along with a return envelope, and the voted ballot must be in hand at the Town Clerk's Office no later than 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, August 13th, to be counted. The results of the vote will be presented to the Select Board in September. And that's all I have.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. All right. Are there Select Board members' comments and committee reports? I send there might be, in our ice cream theme, additional announcements.
I'm not going to announce anything about ice cream, but I do want to say, you know, my husband's grandmother used to always say, "It smells like things are getting done," when the roads are getting fixed up, when it might seem inconvenient, but boy, it's great to see things changing and getting better around here. So just want to shout out our Department of Public Works and all support in that regard.
Other members? Awesome, awesome.
Yes, thank you. I just want to give a brief update to members of the public about the bridge project, just to keep everyone apprised, things are moving forward. Amanda and I are going to be meeting, going to a New Hampshire Department of Transportation meeting on Friday with representatives from Hinsdale. VTrans, at least one Vermont state legislator will be there, and the goal of this first meeting is really just to get us all in a room and get us talking again. But I think Amanda and I are both very optimistic that something can be worked out, and also that our goal is to work something out that works for everybody, makes sense for Brattleboro, addresses Hinsdale's concerns, and we think there's a path, but we'll know more after Friday.
And Sue Fillion from the Planning Department.
Yeah, Sue will be there. So that's it. Thank you.
Other members? All right. We shall begin. Let's begin with public participation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment that is, about an item that is not on the regular agenda? And I see Sue.
Susan Bell, Bell, Brattleboro. First of all, I'm going to raise the issue about the Canal Street corridor. There was that plan put forward, and it feels to me like some of it's being implemented because the parking on the east side of Canal Street, from Washington Street down to the school, the Canal Street School, has been eliminated, and parking on the west side is now available of the street. So I'm just putting that out there. The paint lines are there. The road has been scraped, but it hasn't been resurfaced yet, and I don't know if that will change, but it's, it's a concern for me.
Just, let me stop you right there, Sue, to just ask. That's come up before, hasn't it, John?
Yeah, and my understanding was that we were not implementing components of that. This may be just temporary markings before they do the paving and the final, so I would have to look into that.
Yep. Okay, I'll take it at that. I'll wait and see what happens after the surface is put down.
Yep.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, and it's in the Select Board's report, is the information from the Police Department regarding the number of calls that they've had during the month of June. During May of this year, there were 1343 calls. In the month of June, there were 1401. That's a significant increase. And in June of 2024, there are 1,074, over 300 more calls this June versus last June. The number of calls that were sent into dispatch in May were 7,849. In June, 8,165 calls to dispatch. With the $1,400, $1,400, wow, 1,401 calls, that equates to 47, almost 47 calls a day to the Police Department that they have to send officers out on. We've got a lot more work to do, and on top of that, I know I'm running out of time, but I sent an article to all of you regarding the Commons Vermont, or Compass Vermont, that talked about the opioid money that is not being distributed for law enforcement to do work on the trafficking of drugs into Vermont, that that money is being withheld by the legislature to the tune of at least $5 million that's not making it for law enforcement. And I hope you all read that article completely so that you understood what was being said about the funding. It's not just the fact that New York drug traffickers are using Vermont as a major hub, it's the fact that we're not giving, we're not getting the funds locally and at the state level to finance that trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And your timing is impeccable. Is there anyone else? Dick, and then Ivan?
Thank you, Dick DeGrae, District 8. I would just tell you, I think the roads are in better shape after they've been scarified than they were before with all the potholes, so I appreciate the condition they're in right now. My question for the board deals with a motion that was made two weeks ago when you approved the transportation project. I called the town attorney, but in fact, I've called him twice. I don't know if he's on vacation. He hasn't returned my call. Maybe, John, you could look into that, because I was trying to get an answer to this. The motion, I believe, that Amanda made was to not exceed $550,000 or $555,000 for the project. And there's a 50 or a $55,000 contingency, but that's not part of the motion. If the motion included that contingency, then the motion should have been 610 or 65, whatever it was. So if, my question was, if you need to use that contingency money, then the board does have to come back and approve that, that the project just can't spend that money because your motion was not to exceed. Am I correct in that?
We'll look into that, Dick, and go back to you.
Thank you.
Ivan?
Ivan Hennessy, District 8. The renovations to the Transportation Center, will they fix up the stairs in the southwest corner? The ones that are, there's a flight that's currently completely blocked off, the rest are?
John, I don't know.
My understanding is that that is a separate project that has been budgeted in the general, in the parking fund to repair, to make that repair, yes. And it, I think, I don't know what the status of it is, but I think it's, if not designed, it's, it's, it's close to being bid, bid out, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Someone online? Seth?
Bob Ozer.
Bob?
Hello, Bob, Bob Ozer, Brattleboro. Hello, Bob Ozer, Brattleboro. I hope you can hear me. Just very briefly, I shared this with the Select Board previously, but just so everyone knows, last Saturday, helped a few people do some cleanup work on the Brattleboro shore of the Bridges area at Bridge Street and Depot Street, and encountered two young women from Brooklyn who came by and said, "Do we get to the trail in Wantastiquet from here?" And I felt very awkward trying to explain how you can't get there from here. You know, I could explain how to get to, you know, back to Vernon Street and take the other bridge, but that's sort of like walking on the side of the Jersey Turnpike. So it was just, I got a moment of like really awkwardness of how to explain that to folks, and that there is this connection with Wantastiquet that Brattleboro has. So I just wanted to share that for, for your knowledge and for anyone who's listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Yes, Seth?
Gary Stroud.
Thank you.
On a greater note, we will be getting another pharmacy here in Brattleboro at the old Newton business. It's going to be a pharmacy from Bellas Falls. I'm excited about that. And we're able to keep Rite Aid. Now it's going to be Kenny Drugstore, so two good positive things that are in Brattleboro that we can say that it's a good thing, and I'd like to also thank Dan Tyler and his crew working in that sweltering weather out there, him and the team out there getting the streets paved to the goal, done and everything, and getting prepped for the town to continue on making this town vibrant and safe. Just wanted to reach out and say thank you, and I think everybody should give him a handshake on the way out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So let's proceed with the consent agenda. John, would you give us a nickel tour of the consent agenda?
Yep. So you have seven items on the consent agenda tonight, Board. If you approve this agenda, you'll be approving a first and third-class liquor license for Sages Pub, which is located at Sixth Flat Street. You'll be approving a first-class liquor license for the Brattleboro Inn at 1186 Putney Road. You'll be approving several capital equipment replacement purchases for DPW, a 115,478 trailer jetter loader, a $126,185 backhoe loader, and three pickup trucks for a total of $116,704. There's information in your backup materials about the good work that went into the use of cooperative purchasing contracts, trade-ins, and bidding to keep within the overall capital budget for those capital items. You'll be approving acceptance of up to $32,157 from the opioid settlement funds to do comprehensive community training programs through the Fire Department related to overdose emergency response, and you'll be ratifying application for a grant of up to $20,473 from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for purchasing six defibrillators. Excuse me.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone who would like to pull items from the consent agenda? All right, then. May I have a motion to vote on the items on the consent agenda? Pete?
Okay. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Isaac. Isaac has moved to approve the consent agenda as presented. All Select Board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And that's a 5-0 vote. All right. We move on to regular business. The first item is Green Mountain Power Ames Hill Road Project, and someone from Green Mountain Power is here, some two people, and we've invited them to the table, and please introduce yourself and welcome.
Sure. Thank you. Tim Jones, Green Mountain Power. Don Mills, probably familiar to you all. He's our operations supervisor for our Brattleboro District. And also in the gallery tonight is Kristen Carlson, who's our VP of Communications. Thank you to John's team for getting us on the agenda tonight. We were here two months ago to share the highlights of our Zero Outage Initiative with the promise that we'd be back with a real project, and here we are tonight to talk about Ames Hill. We had the opportunity to meet with Dan Tyler's team on July 10th out in the field. GMP, our construction management firm, and our prime earthwork contractor, at which time we were able to share maps and the scope of the project. Subsequent to that, we've shared all the design materials and a proposed town right-of-way work agreement with Dan's team as well to lay out the specifics of means and methods of how we would construct this project. So the basic scope of which is from the paved section of Heinsburg Road on through Ames Hill Road and all the way into Marlboro. So it is a project that straddles both communities. Thursday night will be first pass for us in Marlboro, and we'll be following up later in August for a second meeting with them as well. So our ask this round here from the town Select Board is to just identify what the pathway to approving our Ames Hill project will be, and what else, if anything, we can provide to the town in terms of scope and the body of the work agreement, and how we propose to basically construct in your roadway, and then subsequently return your infrastructure as we found it, if not a little better along the way. And just happy to answer any technical questions, and Seth Dunn is our, you know, expert in the room in that respect, and has had a steady hand in the design of this project and can answer any number of questions if there are any.
Oh, great. Thank you. I see there are some questions. My first question is, when is this to be scheduled?
Ideally, we'd like to get this scheduled for the first or second week of August, and that would give us enough time to build the project and get everything restored before the onset of, the onset of winter construction. So basically, we'd like to be done by no later than Halloween.
Well, that's great, and don't mention what may come, because it's too nice a day. Amanda, did you have a comment?
I did. I have a couple of questions for you. Are you starting in Marlboro or are you starting in Brattleboro?
We're gonna start in Brattleboro, because you're first up, and if things go accordingly tonight, that will be our first permission, so we would start with the overhead portion along the paved section of Heinsburg Road and lead into Ames Hill Road, and then start our undergrounding project in Brattleboro.
Okay. Another question is, tell me a little bit more about culverts. So Hurricane Irene, the town had rebuilt a culvert right before we had that, and it saved a significant amount of road and land that's in the floodplain of the Ames Brook. And so you could potentially be overlapping with hurricane season, and I wonder what your contingencies are for that.
No, it's a great question. Culverts and road restoration is a centerpiece of this work, and I think we talked to Dan's team about identifying all the culverts in our path, and just sort of as a rule of thumb, anything that was 24 inches or smaller would be replaced. Anything larger, old stone culverts, we would rise up and go over, so we're not going to mess with anything that really carries a lot of open water. But as we trench during the day, our goal is typically, let's just say, 2,500 feet per day, and however many culverts we encounter that day is how many culverts are torn up and replaced. So we do pace along with our trenching operation as not to string out our job site, so it really moves as one. So that'll be our two-week look ahead, or even a daily plan, is what's the weather, what can we get done today to make sure the roads are put back together? Any culvert that is removed is replaced, so that's just part of our overall, you know, scheme of, you know, how's, you know, how are we gonna attack work on a given day or week?
And then for box culverts that also are bridges, they will be going under them or they'll be cut right through those as well?
Will go over the top. So we rise up and rise down, so just in that example, we would approach the bridge offset from that at least 50 feet from the top of the bank, and go up and over with one span and come down the other side. So there'd be no construction in or around the bridge, so we'd just go aerial.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I must thank you very much for, oh, yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a comment.
I'm wondering, you've got a lot of poles.
Um, excuse me, can you come give your name and address your comments to me, to the board? Yes, I know. It's terrible.
Thank you. I'm Neil Manders, District 7. I'm curious, there are a lot of poles along that road currently that are hanging a lot of other things besides the power. We've got cable running through there, and we've got telephone running through there. So I'm wondering what's going to be the status of those?
Yeah. So just explain the procedure for other utilities, please.
Absolutely. Sure. Joint Utilities is what we call them, so those are other utilities, communications that are licensed on our poles. So GMP is taking the initiative and putting a spare duct in the ground as an inducement to get these other joint utilities to join us underground, so we'll be working in close concert for whoever those attaches are, and working out a schedule by which we finish our project, we energize, get all of our customers back online, and then we'll go to work with the joint utilities and work that way. So the ultimate goal would be to retire that pole line that you see out there, or at least most of it. There'll still be plenty of overhead that goes from our new line to customer services. Those won't be touched as a general rule, but the goal is to get rid of as much overhead as we can as we switch to underground configuration.
Are there any more comments from the public? Online? All right. Now let me thank you once again for your work and for coming here tonight, and the Select Board will take no action, but if you need to work with our DPW team, you both have our support.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Brattleboro Street Food Festival. John?
Yes, and I don't know if we have representatives here from the Street Food Festival. Is anyone here?
It's online.
Oh, online, great. Jordan, hi. So the Brattleboro Street Food Festival has applied for an open meeting permit, which is in your packet. That application is in there. On, while we're still, while we're kind of undergoing the review of Chapter 11, every time a permit which has a large amount of people expected at the event, we've been, our procedure has been to bring that to the Select Board for conversation if you wish to have it. And Liz, I would just ask if you might want to invite Jordan to talk about his event, if that would be helpful, or if not, the information's all in your packet.
Well, I think it would, and it would give Jordan an opportunity to tell the public, so please do, Jordan.
Thanks. So this would be our third year hosting this event at the Commons. We've held it for, I believe, seven years in total, and I, I mean, we, when I first read the email that Jessica sent me, I must be honest and tell you that just because of there is not one centralized entry point, it was kind of hard for us to know if this event met the criteria for review or not. I think it stated 3,000 or over, and I'm so sorry. I'm actually, if you can hear that noise, I'm on, I'm on a little vacation in Maine, and I'm, there's a train right behind the house, and it's blaring its horn, so if you can hear that, my apologies, but, okay, okay. Nevertheless, so we kind of gave our best estimate, and we anticipated that in past years at the Commons, we've seen about 1,500 people throughout the course of the day, and that usually begins around 11:00 a.m. and commences around 4:00 p.m.
Right, just like, I'm...
State your name.
I'm Bud Lola. I'm at, at, at Repin, the partial organizer of this event. It is our eighth year. Typically, we have, again, it's all weather dependent. We've been fortunate where we haven't had rain. We've had a couple times where it's been blazingly hot, but it's all, it's not like a concert or a sporting event where you're gonna have everybody there for three, four hours. This is, people come there, some come there for 15, 20 minutes just to grab some food, some come to hang out for a half hour, maybe 45 minutes, listen to the band, or they want to see the Circus School, putting on one of their three performances, but we don't charge any entrance fee to this at all. This is, this is completely sponsor-driven. We want it to be, we want it to be a community event, and people just come and go. So it's not like we're an event where we have 1,500, 2,000 people at one time. You know, Peter's been there the past two years, you know, so he can attest to that. It's a very transient crowd coming in and out.
Well, that sounds delightful. Thank you very much. Now, do Select Board members have comments and questions? Yes, Oscar?
Just to say that I'm glad you're still doing this, and I'm really excited for it.
Wonderful. Peter, do you want to attest to your presence there in the previous years?
Yeah, we had done some collaborations between their festival and a nonprofit that I serve, and we have, we have moved our event down to Retreat Farm sometime later, and they're gonna continue on at the Common. It's a fun event. People seem to really have a nice time.
Great.
Kind of mosey on. It's free to the public, so that's nice.
I look forward to it. Are there members of the public who would like to ask questions or give comments? No? Okay. Are we ready?
I actually have one question. Are all vendors responsible for their own trash disposal, or does the organization help with that?
They take care of the trash.
We take care of the trash. We have trash cans out and about. We supply, we have a dumpster that's there, and, and we go around collecting all the trash, and we take care of that, so yeah, it's...
So the organization does it? Okay, great.
Yes, yeah.
Would a member of the Select Board like to make a motion that we...
I'll motion.
Please.
Let's see here. I, I motion to approve an open meeting permit for the Brattleboro Street Food Festival to take place September 6, 2025, on the Common.
Great. Peter has made a motion to approve the open meeting permit application for the Brattleboro Street Food Festival to be held Saturday, September 6, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the Common. All Select Board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, another 5-0 vote. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and I'll see you at the Common.
Take care, guys.
Thank you all so much. Pleasure. Take care.
All right. Next, we have the exciting second reading of the Brattleboro Code of Ordinance, Chapter 18, Water and Sewer, Article 2, Sewer, Section 18-137, Sewer Rates, and Article 3, Water Division 2 Rates. That sounds really exciting. Dan, would you like to...
Sure. So, as you mentioned, second reading, we have two motions we're asking you to make tonight. One would be to adopt the changes to the ordinance that we talked about at the last meeting, at the first reading. Kind of an overview of that is it removes specific rate, rates and schedules from the ordinance and, you know, and refers to a separate fee chart that would include all the rates. And the advantage to that is next year, when we go through this process, if you choose to adjust the rates, we don't have to go through the ordinance revision process. We can make amendments to the, to the fee schedule. And then the second, the second motion would be to adopt that fee schedule. So we've had some back and forth in past meetings about rates, and what we've included in the fee schedule is a five-year schedule, starting off FY '26 with a 9% increase to the water rates, same in FY '27, and then FY '28 through '30 would be a 3% annual increase. On the sewer side, FY '26 would be a 0% increase, FY '27 would see a 1% increase, and '28 through '30 would be a 2% annual increase.
And is, that's what we talked about at the last meeting as well.
Correct.
All right. Are there Select Board members who have questions and comments? Oh, John, please.
If I could just add, so somehow the fee schedule got left off of your backup material, so there was a copy placed at your desks here tonight. There's also copies for the public over there. They do reflect what Dan described in the memo and what he just described now, and so that's, that's what we would move forward with if you wanted to approve this tonight.
Great. Again, do my colleagues have questions or comments?
I have a question, Dan. The connection charges, page paragraph that was amended, so what we see here in Section 18, 142, is the actual... So what we see here in Section 18, 142, is the actual, this is the change, the changed one? Okay.
The connection fees are still in there, right, is, is what you're noting?
I see it scra- like scratched off, that it was a thou- like, one thousand dollars per unit? So is that, is, does that appear somewhere else in the? I guess I'm.
I didn't bring the.
I see it scratched off, so that was just a change in the fee, or just a change in where it is located in the?
We didn't change the connection fees at all.
Okay.
I, I think those remain where they are.
So you may need to add it to the.
Add those to the fee schedule if they're.
Okay.
So you'll add that to the fee schedule, and we will make an amendment to the motion to make sure that it's included? All right, is, are any of my colleagues on my left side have any comments to make? Question? All right, are there comments by members of the public? Are there comments online? All right, so I wouldn't want the public to think that we were giving this item short shrift, because we did discuss it in detail, and I know that there was a lot of back and forth from my colleagues and myself and the public. So I just want to thank Dan for incorporating all of that, all those concerns and discussion. And Board, are we ready to vote? Great, so we'll have two votes. Someone want to make the first motion, and then the second motion? Oscar, would you?
Sure. How do we want to do the second motion to include the?
I would just say as amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I move to adopt the proposed changes to the Brattleboro Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Water and Sewer, Article 2, Sewer, Section 18, 137, Sewer Rates, and Article 3, Water, Division 2, Rates, as presented.
Great. Oscar has made a motion to adopt the proposed changes to the Brattleboro Code of Ordinance, Chapter 18, Water and Sewer, Article 2, Sewer, Section 18 to 137, Sewer Rates, and Article 3, Water, Division 2, Rates, as presented. All select board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's another five zero. Oscar, take it away.
Okay, so I move to adopt the town fee schedule as amended, which may be amended from time to time.
Very good. Oscar has moved to adopt the town fee schedule, not as presented, but as just amended, and the town fee schedule may be amended from time to time. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And that's another five zero. So Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's next? The negotiated municipal contribution, John?
Yes, is Jennifer Brunel online or in the room? Yeah, here she is, great. So the town assessor will join us to describe this, this proposal, I guess I should say. We wanted, we, we heard from the select board during the budget process about putting some more attention to properties in town that may not be paying property taxes and seeking donations from them, and so I, I guess I'll turn it over to Jennifer and hear what you came up with.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, everybody. So your packet has two separate spreadsheets. One shows the nonprofits that have had a negotiation with the town to make a pilot payment, I'm sorry, a negotiated contribution. And those have gone through the assessor's office over the years and have continued on. The, the fees paid, or the negotiations range in different, different agreements, different percentages, but roughly similar. And a second spreadsheet show the nonprofits that own property that are exempt or partially exempt. There are two in here, I believe, that, two or three, that make a payment. Hilltop Montessori, these taxes paid, on your column farthest to the right is for the portion of solar array that is beyond the fifty K, which is exempt. But the rest of the property is exempt. The suggestion that I have come up with is forty-eight percent. And that comes from working with finance department to capture sort of an understanding of the expenses, budgeted fiscal '26 for solid waste, police, dispatch, DPW, et cetera. So roughly about forty-eight percent. There's a column that indicates what the full tax would be, and that next column is the suggested contribution for each parcel. I've included, um, so some of the exemptions are made by coming to the listers, and there is a public pious and charitable form that is guided by case study, cases that have gone to Supreme Court or Superior Court, and the listers determine with the guidance from town attorney if they fall under the, I think it's a three-prong test, for exemption. Then you have churches, railroads, hospitals. There are, the hospitals that are listed represent the ones that don't pay any taxes, but there are hospitals, properties owned by the Brattleboro Memorial Hospital that do pay taxes, but these are just the ones that do not. Then we have some federal government and state-owned properties listed. In your packet, you'll also see a sample letter provided with, it, it is very similar to one of the letters that I send out from the assessor's office, but this one would be signed by the select board.
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
John, you want to?
Yeah, so really, we're looking for the board's thoughts on this. We suggested a motion here, if you want to consider that. If you want us to go back and work on this, we can do that as well. But we, we really, I think the question for the board is, there, there are these, these exempt organizations that do pay some contributions, and they do pay some property taxes. Do you want to send a letter asking for additional donations from those organizations on that first spreadsheet or not? And then on the second spreadsheet, do you want to send letters asking for a voluntary contribution from these other organizations which don't pay property taxes for, for the reasons Jennifer stated, or not? And, and/or do you want to just kind of treat everyone the same, or do you want to, you know, pick and choose there? Or how, how do you want to, how do you want us to consider moving forward?
Am I correct in saying that the letter is really the opening of a con- of a conversation between the town and each interested party? And I'm sure you've done that before. Who does those negotiations?
So I inherited these negotiations. The only one that's new for me is Rescue, Inc., and that was based on a finding in our office of a lease signed in 1976 that they would be responsible for the taxes for the land. They leased the land. And we had a conversation, we inspected the land and let them know that this was, this pilot payment letter was going to come, or this, you know, yeah, it's a pilot, pilot payment.
Great.
Would, letter would come. But I have not sat down and had any, my predecessors did that probably two or three ago.
Fine. And John, how do you, how do you foresee this process taking place?
Well, if, if the board wants to move forward this, we would put together letters for all of these, and we could have you all sign them if you wanted to send them out, or we could do a, you know, do a copy, like a batch copy kind of thing. And then I think, you know, some, some of these organizations may just ignore these letters or look at them and say, that's not for us, and that's fine, we wouldn't do any follow-up or anything, but we, we're just kind of asking if folks want to be good community partners and help out on these, the costs, the costs that we're seeing on some of these essential services that they're benefiting from, like EMS response, fire response, the road, taking care of the roads, all things that these organizations really benefit from. And they may, may want to pitch in to help out with that, and there's a suggested donation in there. I think if any of the, any of them want to have a conversation about, well, we think this, like, we can't, we can't manage the suggested amount, you know, our response would be, well, is there something that you, you could handle? And we, I, I'm not seeing this as resulting in agreements, like, you know, any sort of agreements other than what is it that the organization might be able to manage or budget to help out the town?
So I'm hearing that you're going to send out these letters, and you will not follow up, but perhaps the board wants you to.
If, if you want us to follow up, we certainly would.
Yeah, you know, I've got some, some thoughts about maybe just doing a slight rewordsmithing of this, you know, as, as opposed to suggesting forty-eight percent, just saying, you know, it takes forty-eight percent to provide these services, and with that in mind, we would like to help you contribute. And, you know, when I look at the list of people who contribute versus the people who don't, and utilize some of these services, there seems to be a little bit of an inequity there. A full disclosure, at the top of the packet, right at the top of the list, is a nonprofit that I am the president of, which is Black Mountain Assisted Family Living. And we contribute two thousand dollars a year, and we have for quite some time. I think I remember us kind of going to the negotiating table, this has got to be going back ten years.
More than that, probably.
More than that, yeah.
It might have been with Phil Turner.
Yeah.
Or Altrard.
And, and so, you know, we, we do own some property in which we house some people with developmental delays, and, you know, and, and we're happy to make that contribution. I also think it's feasible to go, maybe in a separate letter to the people who do this, and see if there's any more wiggle room to do it. There's an old saying in sales, the, the best customer to get is the one that you already have, who kind of understand. I, again, like sort of rewordsmithing this to say forty-eight percent of, of what you have is what covers road, trash, police, fire, EMS, and, and maybe, you know, showing that number. Because if, like, I don't know that we could bear a forty-eight percent payout right now. And, you know, if you look at, like, Brattleboro Housing, if you're asking them for, you know, forty-eight percent housing, I mean, that, that's enough to really kind of hamstring, but if we could get something, a little bit of something out of them, I think that that's good. And I also think a follow-up with maybe a set expectation is not unrealistic. You know, going into it with a number, with a more personable approach of, you know, in the form of another letter or a phone call, maybe, you know, and I don't know who does that. Like, I'm happy to help, I get it, you know, if you're not, if you're not in the sales pitching business, I can certainly lend a hand if that's even appropriate. But I think that is, that is a good way to, to, to approach this. I think it is, it, it is important that we get, try to get some more people added to this first page, though, for sure.
Great, other members? Go ahead, Oscar.
Well, I appreciate the effort that your office is making to see how we can increase revenue. And certainly where there is a lease agreement or some sort of contract with organizations, I see that as totally appropriate for us to follow up on those agreements, like the situation you mentioned with Rescue, Inc., where there has, is a less lease agreement regarding the land that the organization sits on. You know, a defining characteristic of nonprofit organizations is their tax-exempt status because of the benefit that they provide to our community. And these organizations, obviously, their benefit from our community, from the, the public services that our town provides, but it's a, there's mutual benefit, if we think about the hospital and what that provides for our community, or hospice, or any number of these different organizations. And so, you know, and in this context of the fed, federal cuts that we're seeing, for instance, that's really going to be hard for the hospital. I think it's, this is, isn't the best moment to be asking organizations to be contributing to our municipal budget.
Which is why I think no is an acceptable answer to a request. So it's not a demand, right? We're just sort of saying, if you have it, could you?
And I've been at some negotiations with some of these nonprofits, and it's never a good time. So it's really, if it's never a good time, it's a good time for us to ask. And I think that's, that's why, why we would be doing this. How about on the right side of me, we have comments?
Do, did you want to go first? I'm happy to go.
Sure. Oh, me? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I, I think it's okay to ask. I think we should be clear either now or in the letter. I, I think we sort of have been, but that, you know, these, these nonprofits all earned their tax-exempt status the right way. There is no obligation for them to do anything, they're, they haven't done anything wrong, certainly by the town not getting this money. They're not causing hardship, but I think the idea of asking, I think we may find some, some organizations who legitimately say, oh, you know, I didn't think of it that way. Sure, we can, we can't do eight thousand, but we could do three thousand or something like that. So I think that's a good idea. Two, two technical notes. I would say, anyone on the top sheet, we don't bother this year because they've already made the effort. The ones who are already making some contribution.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then I would just want to make sure that for any of these organizations who are paying something that, for example, Winston Proudty's already paying more than forty-eight percent, that we don't ask them for anything, or if it's somebody who's paying a little, we only suggest the difference. But other than that, I think, you know, we may get a bunch of no's, but that's okay.
I think, though, Peter's comment on the, you know, these are the people who understand the situation, they're much more likely to, to understand the process and should be asked.
I don't mind the idea of asking, I just think it's, it, it wouldn't be out of line to. to leave them off for the first year because they've already been voluntarily doing this. I mean, HCRS has been paying their entire tax burden this whole time. So, I, I'm not unhappy either way, but I think it might be a nice little tip of the hat to these organizations that have been doing it.
But since they are the example, they might want to, you know, even just up it a little, and that would be nice.
Sure.
Amanda?
Yeah, I mean, Brattleboro is unique in that we have one of, I think we have the most nonprofits in our town of any other town in Vermont. And so, though, and we do have mutual, it's mutually beneficial, certainly. But what we're talking about here is working together, and that means also working together to help compensate the municipality in some way for the essential services that we provide to release some of the burdens off the residential taxpayers who are employees of these organizations, who are trying to keep their housing and work in these organizations. And I just think as a global kind of community idea, I ask our nonprofit sector to have a conversation with yourself and your boards and say, you know, what could we do? It doesn't have to be oodles and oodles of money, but it would be great if it's something as a gesture to say. On the other hand, it would be great if it was oodles and oodles of money. But I will say that because we need that. Because our, yeah. So, anyway, so what I see, this is a reframe. We're having a reframe. We're going through a reframe. It's 2025, as Jennifer said. Thank you for working this out. It's been a long time since a lot of these organizations were looked at and asked. So, we're going to ask, and thank you for considering. And it'll help us all.
All right. Let's have a motion, and then let's ask the public for any questions or comments they might have. Motion?
I don't have it handy if somebody else wants to. All right, we'll work my way to it.
Oh, sure.
You got it?
I have it.
Go ahead.
You got it?
Well, kinda. Is it okay to read the recommended one in the memo?
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the list of parcels for a negotiated municipal contribution as presented. Yes.
Okay. Does the public have comments?
Hi, Gemma Seymour, District 8. I just have a, a number of questions that are not necessarily directly related to the motion, but would provide me some background information because I'm coming into this a bit late. Where are the ordinances that govern property tax exemptions? Are these state or local laws? Does anybody have a citation for them? What determines the exemption? And most importantly, in the interests of fairness, as a follower of Henry George's ideas on land value taxation, I am not a big fan of property tax exemptions for any organization, for whatever reason, although I allow that there might be some good reasons for specific exemptions. But in the interests of fairness, how do these laws affect NPOs who are renters rather than landowners? Because they are paying property taxes to their landlords, who are then, I assume, not exempt because they are not themselves the nonprofits? Or is there some cutout for them? And how is that determined?
Let's, let's take your last comment first, Gemma, so I can just understand it. Renters pay rent.
Yes, and included in that rent is the property taxes that the landowners pay to the state.
Yes, but if that is the case, you mean they pay it to the state and not to the municipality?
No, they pay it to the landlord. The landlord pays it to.
The municipality.
Municipality and/or the state.
Yes, but so if the landlord is tax-exempt, then the rent?
But, yes, but the landlord would not be tax-exempt. The NPO would be tax-exempt to, and renting from a non-tax-exempt landowner.
Maybe a point of clarification?
Okay.
Maybe is, so this list is, are just for the nonprofits that own land?
Correct.
Okay. So, these are direct landowners?
And then Jennifer, do you have legal citations?
So, there are different statutes for the list, both lists. Some of them are from pilot pay, sorry, public pious and charitable, which needs to go to the listers for them to decide whether or not they qualify. There's guidance from court cases. And the form indicates that you need to be a nonprofit. You need to be open to the public, to an indefinite class of people. Those are the three, that's the three-pronged test. And it gets really difficult at times. We need to ask guidance from the town attorney from time to time. Some are clear, and some are not. There are statutes in here for economic development. I'm going to say that everything in here is state statute-guided for the reasons that they are exempt. If not, they're federal, federal ownership.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer.
If I could just offer a clarification?
Sure. And tell me the name of that man who you're devotee of?
Henry George, very famous American economist. He wrote a very famous book called Progress and Poverty in 1879.
Thank you.
The federal taxes exemption is usually used to cascade through other state and local laws. However, property taxes are at the state and local level. They have nothing to do with the federal government. So, thank you.
Oscar?
Just for my own clarification, is it accurate to say that for most of the tax-exempt properties in town, the municipality doesn't really have much control over that? There are a couple we voluntarily, I think, town meeting approves, but most of them are, if you're a hospital, you essentially are going to be allowed to be tax-exempt by statute?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I'm always happy to hear Henry George come up in any context, so thank you.
All right, are there, yes, yes, sir.
Bill Harvey, District 8. Just point, three points of interest. How many nonprofit organizations are we asking for a contribution? Secondly, are we asking for a lump sum? Or would this amount of money be spread out over a period of time? And thirdly, does this vote, if we vote on this, set a precedent for years to come?
Hmm. So, while John is counting.
I'd also like to ask another question.
Well, let's get an answer.
Jennifer as well, okay.
Jennifer, the questions that Bill Harvey was asking, the number, I think I hear John totaling them up. But the other two questions, is this precedent-setting? No, I, I think we've sent out letters before. They've just been from the assessor's office directly.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And then the other question was?
Is this a lump sum? Or is it asking to spread it out over a period of time?
It could be whichever willing party would be able to pay, and that could be negotiated.
We, in my current letters, we make a suggestion to pay quarterly, similar to the current tax bills.
John, how many?
So, I, just doing it quickly, I got 11 on the first spreadsheet, if you want to ask those organizations, and then 42 on the second. Because there's, there's some repeats and stuff in there. But that's, that's the, so a total of maybe 53 letters that, potentially, that you would send out.
Great.
Heidi Fisher, District 7. Thank you for doing this, everybody. And I loved what Amanda was saying about the focus being, you know, can we ask these organizations to help us out with paying for the municipal services that they receive? I, I feel like if that was the way it start, the conversation started, and then explained that, sort of the numbers of what we're asking for afterwards, it might be a better received kind of thing. So, I would be happy to help you wordsmith that letter as one of the town listers and work with you.
Great. Thank you, Heidi. I think both Heidi and, and Peter might have some suggestions for you, Jennifer.
In, Dick DeGray, District 8, it says here, "We are providing this figure early in the fiscal year and hope that you will choose to make a one-time or a scheduled quarterly contribution. I would actually like you to ask, but you are not compelled to do this." You know, you, you have churches on here. Maybe they can go out and sell holy pictures and rosary beads as a fundraiser and, and give the town money. I agree wholeheartedly with Isaac. I look at the Brattleboro Hospital. I'm hoping we have it at the, at the end of next year. A lot of people have lost their jobs up there, and here we are, going to go over and ask them for a contribution. I did ask early on about BDCC's agreement that they have. It's not quite clear to me. And I disagree with Oscar that the people on the top, if you're going to ask people for more money, we should be asking everybody that's on the list for money. No one should be exempt. And I'm actually here, and I would say to people that get this letter, that I hope you don't send a contribution. Community is community. And although I may not send personal checks to some of these organizations, I do to others. And I think we're a community that benefits from having these organizations. And when we look at, when we look at groundworks, because that's one that people have in the back of their mind because of the services that they require from the municipality, the town gave them money when they were putting up their new building. If the town didn't feel so compelled to have that organization grow and expand, they should not have applied for grants for them or given them money. And so, I'm really disappointed. I can understand why you're doing it, but I'm disappointed that we're sending people letters to go out and say, if you can give us money. They wouldn't be on this list if they were profitable. We would be taxing them, or they would be taxed. So, I actually hope you vote this down. I don't think you will, but I think this sends the wrong message to our community as a whole and what it stands for. Thank you.
Is there anyone online? Is there anyone else in the public? Are we ready to take a vote?
I have a few more comments. And this is a question. With our 2027 reassessment coming up, I did have some concerned nonprofit board chairs that said, how? Okay, well, that looks, I, I think we could handle part of that now, but how will that change with the reassessment for the nonprofits who own property in Brattleboro that are on this list? How will what change? How will the 2027 reassessment change their municipal tax rate? Their assessed value so that?
Well, you don't know.
They'll go up as, we don't know, because it's. So, everybody in town will have a new assessment, even exempt parcels. If they're exempt, they'll have a zero tax, correct? Right. There will be a change in their assessment. I'm not sure what more. So, it won't, because it, because the chart.
May I answer your question?
Let me keep going just for one moment.
Sure.
Just because the chart and the information is based on that 48% of what the full municipal tax is. I guess I just wanted clarity, because I had a conversation with someone who's a board chair of an organization saying, well, if we say, yeah, we'll pay up to 48%, what will happen when there's a reassessment and our municipal tax rate goes up, potentially, or not?
There'll be a different calculation.
Yeah.
That's all. It'll be, that's not this year.
And it's reiterated, too, that it's voluntary. We're talking about a completely voluntary.
There'll be a new calculation based on the new tax rate and the new fees that, you know, that constitute the 48%. So, this is for this year, and then there'll be one for next year. And each year will be recalculated, I'm assuming.
And also, would it be possible for a nonprofit who owns property that, you know, has a municipal tax rate that is, you know, exempt from paying that, that they say phase up their contribution over two to three years to this ideal 48%? That that becomes part of the negotiation? So, if they feel committed to, yeah, you know, we really do want to contribute to the town. We see, you know, we are on a road. We, if there's a fire, the fire department comes. If, et cetera, et cetera, that they could phase up to something? So, they could start with anything?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is just a suggestion, and I think that that's why we call it a negotiation, so.
Did you?
I just wanted to add on to that, that really, I think we were seeing this as, we'll, we'll try this out this year. We can come back and let you know how it went, and you guys can decide in the future whether you want to do it again or not. We weren't really asking to do this in perpetuity. You may want to, but, you know, let's, let's kind of see how it goes, get you some feedback, and see if you want to continue on with something like this or not.
Oscar?
I think, I appreciate the comments, especially from Isaac and Dick. I think this is something that is worth trying, but I think a lot of it is going to come down to the, well, an important part of it is going to be the specific wording of the letter. And I think there is a relatively fine line between something that sounds like, hey, you're causing problems for us. We need you to give us money, and something that says, hey, we're, we're struggling. We recognize that this is voluntary. We would be grateful for anything you could do. We're making the ask. We won't be angry if you say no. And I would like to err pretty hard on the right side, on the latter side of that. So, I'm wondering about timeline, and also, because I think the wording is important, I would kind of like to approve a letter that we're signing as a board. Like, see a second draft of this and approve the letter.
Might I suggest that we vote on this motion now, and that the final letter should be perhaps sent to each of us, and we comment on it, kind of not reply at all?
Sure, I don't mind that.
And that way, it's not, it's not bound to a meeting and a process. It's just, you know, Jennifer will be getting input from some of us, but at the same time, when the letter is drafted, we can just see it and sign off on it.
I feel like, I don't know. That feels like it drifts into some weird territory for me. Could we just vote on the principle here and then approve a letter at the next meeting in probably five or 10 minutes and then send it?
Oh, I don't think we can do anything in five or 10 minutes, but nice try. I, I, I just want to, I just want to put this out there. You know, a lot of people kind of grab statements and grab words. The driving thing behind this is to, a lot of nonprofits aren't even aware that this is a tax and a burden on the town. To, to Dick's point, to which I sort of disagree, we, just because we're asking for a contribution from a, from a property holder doesn't mean that we don't believe in the community and the service that they support. And I understand what you're saying, which is why, once again, and I really want to drive this point home, no is an acceptable answer. If you can't. It doesn't need to be in the letters. But we can, we can, we can basically say, here's what the laying, here's what it is. Here's how it is, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to help you wordsmith this. And, and basically saying, you know, and if, if you can manage any amount, would be greatly appreciated, whatever that looks like. But, yes, so maybe, maybe I agree with you somewhat in saying to let them know that this is merely a suggestion of a situation that we are in. that we are in right now. If this is something that you can do, great.
Okay. John?
Would, would the board be okay if we, we took the, what we heard today about incorporating some of this language, and we ran the final draft of the letter by Peter, Heidi, and Oscar for final tweaks to that? And then if that was acceptable, we'd bring these back for your signature at the next meeting?
That sounds great.
Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm. Shall we vote on it now? Yes?
I didn't get an answer. I did not get an answer to the question about BDCC and the agreement that they have that I spoke to you previously about. So could you talk about BDCC?
Maybe that specific question can be answered offline.
What was that?
You've, you've already asked this question, Jennifer.
No one, and she did not give me an answer. No one spoke.
We'll follow up.
We'll just follow up with you. I don't know that she has that answer.
She can, she can, because I talked to her briefly, and you were starting the meeting. So she does have that. And we'll get back to you on that. Doesn't work for me.
Jennifer, do you have an answer for Mr. DeGray?
So this is an economic development statute. It is 10 VSA 236. I need to reread that statute to find out if, within the statute, it specifically states that they make a pilot payment, negotiated fee, a contribution. So I do not know the answer to your question as to how the negotiation happened, whether it's in the statute. But I, they make the contribution based on the vacancy. They have an exemption for the vacancy percent of a building that they own. They pay taxes on the rest. So a portion, it's very small amount that they are exempt when they're, when it's an empty portion of the building.
All right, then. So speaking.
Madam Chair, I have one comment.
Yes?
Yeah. You know, if an organization is paying money towards the town, that's less money that they have to provide whatever services that they are providing for our community. And it seems a little strange to me that many of these organizations are ones that the representative town meeting has just voted to actually award funds to. And then we, as a town, if we approve this proposal, would be asking for some or even more of that money to be returned to the town. And I'd like to propose a compromise here, which would be that we send this letter to organizations that Representative Town Meeting has not decided to award funds to. So if this would be a way to, to solicit funds from organizations that the, the Human Services Committee and Representative Town Meeting has not already decided to award money to.
Peter?
Yeah. RTM is not an option. We don't have an option. RTM votes on that. We have to give that money. I'm going to say it again. No is an option with this letter. So we can send this letter. We can wordsmith it so it's nice and everybody feels good about it. And at the end of the day, they can say, "Oh, you know what? I never really thought about the amount of times we use fire and EMS and police. We should contribute something. We can do $100, or we're just not in a position to give." Again, I don't, I don't know that going around and around and around on this is completely necessary in trying to wordsmith it right now. It all comes down to what the letter says, I think, and, and how we make the nonprofits in this community understand. I hear what you're saying. It's not that I don't. It's not that I'm insensitive to it. I'm just thinking, I have an organization that's very small, and we, we contribute $2,000 a year to our tax base. That's what I'm basing my decisions on. So, you know, I'm not saying another organization can afford $2,000. Maybe they can afford 500. Maybe they can afford 100. Maybe they can't afford anything, so they say no. So I just, I think that's, that's where this is sitting for me. So again, RTM, not an option. We voted it in. They get that money. This letter goes out. There's a total option behind it. So I don't see the comparison between one and, one and the other.
All right. I'm, have, have we all weighed in? You have something else to say?
Yeah. You know, Isaac, I see, I think, sort of the, it does seem sort of silly with one hand to give an organization money and then have them send a check back six months later. The reason I'd rather not get into this is that I think once we open up this list and start picking and choosing who we're sending the letter to, it starts to feel much less fair to me. So I would rather just send the letter everywhere, and then organizations, I, I mean, I'm saying it on camera here, should feel completely free, just as Peter's saying, to say no and provide no explanation. And I will hold no grudge, only gratitude if someone chooses to contribute. But I am completely content with a no answer from anyone on this list.
We've had to take a look at different things that are costing the town money, like bigger parades. We had the free food festival in front of us because it's a larger thing. So this is just a piece of it. You know, unfortunately, this is part of us having to try to figure out how to, you know, shore up our budget a little bit more.
This wants to know. Can you read this handwriting? That one just got passed right down the line.
So we're doing another motion, because we had a motion on the floor, didn't we?
Yeah, well, we're editing it based on the conversation that has taken place. Would you like to read that motion?
Happy to read the motion. I move to approve the list of parcels for negotiated municipal contribution as the letter to be finalized by Peter Case, Heidi Fisher, and Oscar Heller under the.
Under the direction.
Under the direction of the Town Assessors Office. That is the motion. Should I read it again?
No. You bring it back to me, because I read it before we vote on it.
Is that okay with Oscar?
Is that okay with you?
I can read the original.
You gave the original.
Yeah, as a friendly amendment, sure.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. Oscar, and then Amanda, have moved to approve the list of parcels for negotiated municipal contribution as amended. The letter to be finalized, well, the list doesn't change, as presented. The letter to be finalized by Peter Case, Heidi Fisher, and Oscar Heller, under the direction of the Town Assessors Office. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's four. All select board members not in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
All right, that's four to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
I look forward to your working with the parties.
Thanks.
FY '25 May Budget Report supplemental information.
Or I guess it's just the whole thing.
John, take it away.
Yeah, it's the whole thing. The financial reports for the month of May that are in your packet provide line item details of activity for the Town General Fund and the two enterprise funds, utilities, and parking. There's a separate report for each fund that reflects the year-to-date revenues and expenditures. And the budget for each account and the percentage of the budget realized or expended through March 31st, 2025, these are unaudited figures. General Fund is showing as of May that revenues are 105% of the annual budget. Expenditures are 97.4%. So total revenues are in the neighborhood of $24.2 million, and total expenses are in the neighborhood of $22.5 million. So the revenues include, for the General Fund, include 1.8 million of receivables. And in the cover memo to this, there is some supplemental information that was requested at the last meeting, further breakdown on receivables. And those are broken out into six categories: EMS receivables, general receivables, property tax receivables, interest, penalty, and bag revenue receivables. And so the, in this chart that's on page 89, you'll see the total receivable as of May 31st, 2025, compared to what it was for May 31st, 2024. Then the FY '25 revenue budgeted amount, and then the cash received for each of those revenue line items. And you'll, there's further detail and information, particularly around the EMS receivables, because I know that's what many people are most curious about, because it's a new receivable that prior to this year was not, not listed in the revenues because we didn't have the program. Utilities, oh, yeah. So bottom line, we have cash balances in the General Fund of over $16 million as of May 31st, and that is showing a surplus of 1.7 million. Utilities Fund, little bit different. The total revenues there as of May 31st are 5.4 million, and total expenses are 6.1 million. That is showing a deficit of 689,000. But that includes, in, in the way we do our accounting, that includes a slightly over $2 million of depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. The revenues, the 5.4 million of revenues in the Utilities Fund includes $313,000 of utility receivables. The Parking Fund, the total revenues as of March 31st were 634,000, and total expenses of 869,000. That's a deficit of 236,000. But that also includes a depreciation of, like in the Utilities Fund and in the Parking Fund case, of 219,000. Also in the May 31st is a, report is a loan report, which shows a balance of slightly over $4 million in outstanding loans, a grant report with information on 30 active grants that the town is, has received, and five grants that are in the application process. And it also has a transfer report that shows all the transfers between funds, and they're broken down further in the memo on page 91. And I think that's all I have to present, and I'm happy to try to field any questions. And if I'm not able to answer them here on my own, I will get you the answers forthwith.
Oscar?
Just a note, that the, for anyone curious, the cash received for EMS does include the 250K in seed funding, or whatever we call it. That notwithstanding, we're well over, in the good way, over budget on revenue, even if the 1.2 million dollars in outstanding claims completely vanished and we had no billing for all of June, we would still end the year at a million in revenue with the seed funding versus a budget, budgeted revenue of whatever it was, 840 with the seed revenue. So, and we are expecting to get some substantial percentage of that 1.2 million. And so it's possible that this may turn out to be really overperformed, which would be great, because we never really get that kind of good news about extra money coming in. So the other note about the seed funding is that it's been sort of a point of contention, and I've had trouble on and off wrapping my head around it. But you can sort of see the effect now, because we have all these receivables. Fiscal year '27 has started. Some of that money that was billed in last fiscal year is going to come in in this fiscal year and make this year's budget sort of look better than it is. And so I think, I still feel, I swing back and forth, but I think it was appropriate to seed the FY '26 revenue in that way. And I'm just really encouraged. I mean, this is really great news.
Thanks, Oscar.
I concur. I just, I think it's worth an explanation of these deficits and the non-cash expense in the Utilities Fund and the Parking Fund. Do you want to give that a gander?
Yeah. And they, I mean, they were both planned deficits in those funds. The, the cash, the cash position on the Utility Fund is excellent. So the fact that we're not actually pulling out cash for depreciation is, you know, it's just an ongoing issue that we're going to have to continue to look at and address. The Parking Budget you went over extensively previously.
Couple weeks ago.
Yep. And that, we really think that it's, we're, we've turned a corner on that now. And the slight deficit of, you know, $20,000 or so is covered by cash that, we can cover it with the cash that we have there. And we hope to see that be a surplus budget in FY ' '26.
Thank you. Comments on the left side of the table? Isaac?
Yeah. And forgive me if this was already explained, but could you go over again, if you haven't already, the utility, the transfers out from the Utility Fund to the General Fund, and also from the Community Safety Fund to the Capital Fund, in particular those I was curious about?
So there are, there are certain central services that are provided through staff that are funded in the General Fund. And so we sometimes make transfers to help cover those costs in the, the enterprise funds. And so there are some transfers back and forth for that purpose. The, the, I'm not sure of the other one. The, you were saying you saw a transfer from the, this, this.
Yeah, I'm looking at page 91.
Fund to the Capital Fund?
The Community Safety Fund to the Capital Fund.
Oh, Community Safety Fund.
And I don't.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
All these off the top of your head.
Yep. And I think that was when we did, when we did the improvements to the Transportation Center for the, the extra fencing around the.
The roof.
The roof, that we transferred some, the Select Board moved to transfer some funding from the Community Safety Fund into the Capital Fund, so that it was all paid for as a part of that project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Oscar?
Yeah, sorry. Some things that John reminded me of. Couple things about those deficits. For anyone who is thinking this, obviously, even though depreciation is non-cash, it's still something we want to balance the budget around. And the plan is with, on the parking side, with the new parking rates, that the budget will balance, including depreciation going forward. So that's good. And the utility deficit, the, the cash on hand is going to be used for capital projects down the road. And the utility rate study we just did was all about balancing that out. So there is a big expense in, what, year four or five for replacing a bunch of stuff. And the rates are set in such a way that if the projections hold, it'll all work out. So another, both those deficits, I think we have a plan in place and don't expect them to be a problem going forward.
Thanks, Oscar.
And I concur. Are there any more comments? Amanda, do you have any comments?
Um, I don't. It's May. I'm looking at May. I look forward to looking at June and July.
Yeah.
I think it's hard to remember what was going on back then, so it's.
I think the end of the year will also be quite helpful, that, or the, you know, the quarterly discussion that's happening in, when's that happening?
I think August 5th.
August 5th. Okey-dokey.
And that's the one with Bonnie?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
All right. So are there comments from the public? I see Dick. I see Kate.
On page seven of 18, back when this board.
Wait a minute. Seven of 18.
Seven of 18.
Page 98 of 234.
Intergovernmental. Intergovernmental total
Ninety-eight.
Our benefits, that's where our benefits.
All right.
Back in April or early May when you were redoing the budget, we found, the, the new finance director found that there were, were several mistakes and that were short-funded, and the question was asked, did you look at the present budget to see if there were any shortfalls? And when I look at social security and I look at retirement, social security is underfunded by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and employee retirement, two hundred and sixteen thousand, four seventeen. My question is, how can these be so off when these figures are actually put together before, when you receive your budget? And this is only July, and you're, you're talking about roughly three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars shortfall in these line items, how could that happen?
Well, first of all, this is for May, John, do you want a comment?
Yeah, no, this is not for July, this is for May of la, last year, so that is the key, I think, I guess I would say that the best thing might be to do is to hold your question for when we do a review of the entire year, and we'll see the total accumulation across the whole year. I think what you're pointing out is, is correct, there was some underestimating in the, in the budget back a year and a half ago, and so we, we did manage to cover a lot of that through pulling back on things, and then also we, we're obviously very good on the revenue side, so I think it's going to work out when we look at the end of year figures, but that, that's what I would urge you to wait until we see those to, to analyze that.
Kate?
Hi, everybody, Kate O'Connor Brattleboro. One little request, which I know I'm not going to get, but I really wish that you would use actual, under actuals and not receivable numbers, because it's, just doesn't make sense to do a budget to actual budget and not use actuals. It's confusing, and the fact that you have to put asterisks and all this stuff, it's, I don't, that, that's just, would make life a lot easier for all of us. And to case in point, and I know I'm zooming ahead to something, but under the EMS revenue, you know, we have actual at one point four six two, you know, one point four million on page two of eighteen, the fire department, and I really appreciate what they've done, they've actually given us the actual collected from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which is eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, which is sixty-two thousand dollars more than we anticipated. So I think that's just what's really confusing to people, that there's the, in the town official finance report, it's the receivable number, but the actual number is different, and again, I really appreciate how the fire department does it. So traditionally, we always have the actual and not the receivable.
John, you want to talk about accounting methods, and what does Bonnie prefer?
I'd love to. I, I actually, I, I hate to punt on this again, but I, when we have Bonnie Batchelder, our finance consultant here at the next meeting, I think that would be a great question for her. She, she says, or she tells me that this is how we've always done it, the receivables have always been included in the budget to actual reports, so that would be a change that you're asking for, and we could maybe see what she thinks about that. We do have to, I mean, this is the way we report our figures and how it gets audited and everything, so I, I don't want to upset the apple cart and do something different, but there is something additional that we could do that would be helpful to people then, you know, as long as we have the capacity to do that in multiple ways, we can, we can see if that's possible.
Or it could be that the fire department does it one way and that the accounting methods are consistent and that they have been.
Yep.
Oscar?
Yeah, John and I talked about this, this week, and we can confirm with Bonnie, but it sounded like because we are at least now using the, and I don't really know this stuff, but the modified accrual accounting method that it, that that's the form, the numbers taken, that's how they come out in the report, it may be there's something we can do to do it differently, but our compromise as of Tuesday, or not Tuesday, yeah, last Tuesday, was to come up, to at least have the memo in the front, have the table with the actuals for the things that are, and so it's, it should, it's not as convenient, but at least the six things in the big table that are receivables are in the memo, and what the actuals are is there. So we can see if there's a better way to integrate that, but at least the info's here.
So, so Oscar, what you're saying is that it's, it's both ways now?
It is, I mean, it is a little confusing, or maybe just for a non-accountant, to look at the report and see a grand total at the end that includes actuals and receivables and whatever. I certainly made that mistake the first time where I thought, oh, we, we're ten months in and we've gotten one point four million in actual receivables from EMS, we're going to blow the doors off. So I think we can work on this, we can keep trying to find the right balance that also does it the way Bonnie, the accountant, says it.
And let's not make too much work for ourselves in the process.
Of course.
Britt?
I just want to
Name.
All right, Frick Bright, District Nine Rep. I just want to appreciate the fact that with the scale of what you're dealing with, there's, you have to do accrual. I, in my tiny business, I do a cash basis, but there are aspects that are accrual anyway in this minute scale compared to what you're dealing with situation. So, yeah, if you can come up with some actual numbers as well, but they change every day. The accrual numbers are the more stable and relevant ones.
Well, thank you, we have a vote for accrual. All right.
It's not a vote for, it's a recognition that that's, that's what you need to do, and that's where the more useful data is, unless at the end of the year, there are things that you just haven't got to collect, haven't collected and aren't going to collect or whatever, but that's another piece of it that is relevant.
Great. Are there any more questions from the public? Are there anyone online? Any further comments from the board? All right, well, thank you very much, John, for this exciting report, and we'll move on, but first, we'll take a break. We'll come back at eight twelve.
Convene the meeting and welcome Sue Villian. Sue, you're talking about the vacant building fee schedule.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So, the vacant building ordinance was adopted by the Select Board in March and it went into effect in May. And as we geared up to start sending out letters and we realized that there had not been an official adoption of fees, when that, there was discussion of it with the previous Select Board, but there had not been an actual fee schedule adopted. We consulted with the town attorney and he felt that we should bring it back before the Select Board to officially establish the fees. Just real briefly, the vacant building ordinance was established to help abate public nuisance, health and safety hazard, undo burdens on public resources and negative impact on grand list values and other harmful effects that arise from vacant buildings in town. The ordinance basically applies to a building that has been vacant for 180 days, so six months. The ordinance establishes a couple of things. So first, there's a registry. And then there are obligations for the property owner for the maintenance of various aspects of the building and the site. And then, third, there's a fee. That fee that we propose gets paid by March 15th of the year. It's prorated for September 15th. So, if something becomes vacant in that intermediary time, then they'll play, pay on Sept-, for September 15th. And then it doubles annually. There's a couple of waivers on the fees. For example, if a property is actively being marketed and is a reasonable asking price. There's a couple of ways that we would determine that. And then also if there is a plan for rehabilitation or a plan to substantially repair or demolish the building. So that's it. So I'm coming before you tonight to not only set the fee, but to appoint a building safety officer, which is also discussed in the ordinance. We'd ask that Brian Bannon, who has enforcement authority under both the zoning, as zoning administrator as well as one of the health officers, seems like that would be a natural fit for his duties. Would probably have some assistance from, check here, the other health officer. And then for a fee schedule, that as discussed, we are proposing a fee to begin at $1,000, doubling annually. So it'd be 2,000 in the second year, three, sorry, 4,000 in the third year, 8,000 in the fourth year. And then after that, it would increase in $5,000 increments every year after that. So, that is, you know, fees, vacant building registration fees are a little all over the place in the state. Burlington is $3,000 per year. They have it done quarterly for residential, one and two family buildings. Commercial buildings are $4,000 for the first year, 6,000 each year after that. Berry is $500 every six months. Rutland looks like it's prob-, Rutland City looks to be around $100. We are recommending $1,000 in that we want it to be somewhat punitive. We want it to be actionable. We probably have about seven or 10 vacant properties that, you know, are chronic, have been sitting like that for years. And a lot of these property owners are paying the property taxes, but they're not, you know, they're not moving on it. They're not trying to sell it at a reasonable price, or they're just sitting on it. So, that's where the $1,000 start comes as a recommendation.
Great. So, I'll just remind the board that, I guess the previous board discussed this at length and discussed all the merits. And that our job here is to approve the schedule and, and/or not, and appoint a safety officer or not. So, Oscar, do you have comments?
Just a quick, general comment, which is just that I always love this ordinance. I was really glad that you guys did this, the previous board. I think it's a good idea. So my only comment is really that I hope we'll get somewhat frequent updates on how this is going. If it feels like the penalties are too low, I hope we'll, you know, reopen it aggressively and think of it. I think this could be a really interesting tool. So, yes. But everything presented here sounds great.
Amanda, do you have comments?
It's, I'm a little unclear what the building safety officers, like, sort of yearly responsibilities would be. Just to, I'd love to learn just a little bit more about that.
So, they'll be, you know, taking any complaints, doing any investigation. They'll have the authority to, you know, make a decision whether or not the fee will be waiver, wa-, waived, sorry. They would do enforcement as well, probably inspections as necessary.
Great, thank you. How about on the left side of the table?
Yeah, it's great to see this moving forward. You know, similarly to what Oscar said, this just seems like a great way to discourage the nuisance of unoccupied buildings as well as encourage occupancy when we have a housing shortage. This is something we can do. And my one question is, would it make sense, is it necessary to appoint, to include the name of a particular individual in, rather than a particular role? So for instance, would it make more sense for longevity of this to say, to appoint the zoning administrator as the building safety officer? So that, you know, if, if and when at some point Brian decides to take a new position, we wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to come back to us for another motion.
It's an interesting question. If I can just follow up to that question. Is, would that always fall under the purview of the zoning administrator? That sort of, that sort of inspection, safety officer kind of a thing? I mean, would that, because I like that suggestion, but my, that would be my only concern is just, it's just Brian's first and, we know Brian's like a gem. But, is, would, if Brian decided to leave his position and a new zoning administrator, would he come in with that same skillset? Or perceived to be same skillset?
You know, if we leave it the way it's written, if there's ever any change, it's no big deal to come back and ask.
There's that. I mean, if you want to go the easy way out.
Sometimes.
All right.
These are good questions. I mean, I-
Well, you'll find only the left side of the table has a question.
It's probably a good question for the town attorney. I know that Brian is, I think it's every three years, he is appointed as the zoning administrator. I mean, so, so there is some sort of official Select Board action to appoint him as a specific person. So, I mean, tonight, you, you could appoint it in the name and then maybe we could roll it into that.
That sounds like a good idea.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to go.
Yeah, let's make a motion and then we'll hear from the public.
All right, do we want to make them, one, both of them at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I motioned to approve the revised vacant building fee schedule as submitted and to appoint Brian Bannon, zoning administrator, as the building safety officer.
Great. Peter's made a motion. Now let's hear from Sue. And then Gemma. Go ahead, Sue. And then, Frick.
Susan Belleville-Brattleboro. My question is, the fee schedule is quite hefty. I mean, but I'm wondering what teeth it has. If people just plain opt not, opt to ignore the fee schedule and the rate increases, at what point does, can the town take legal action and take over the property for, and then make it, take ownership of the property in some fashion and make it an acceptable piece of property again? Otherwise, this ordinance is just a rubber, a bunny slipper thrown into the wind. I'm sorry to use that analogy, but there are people who are that belligerent who wouldn't pay the bill and just leave the building the way it is.
Susan, I'm not sure that you stated your name in the beginning. If you did, could you repeat it?
Oh, sorry. Susan Belleville-Brattleboro.
Thank you. That's an interesting question. And let's ask Sue about the teeth.
Yeah, so, we, there is a provision in the ordinance where it's a civil matter and that we could enforce it with the Vermont Judicial Bureau or the Wyndham County Superior Court. So typically, we would start ticketing because they're in violation of the ordinance and then we would go to court action with the town attorney. I think there is a stipulation in here where, you know, we could get permission from the court to demolish. We could put a lien on it to, if the town stepped in to secure a property. So, I mean, it would all be through the courts.
And so those are all of the options available to us by law. Susan?
Sorry, as a follow-up to that, if the person, if the owner is making payment on taxes, you can't for, you can't do a tax sale. You can try to get ownership maybe through the court for not paying the fine. And that would be involving putting a lien on the property. But I would love to see a property that fell into that category and went that far down the pipe be resold and not become a town burden, resold to someone who would do something productive with it.
I'm sure that we will see how this works. I mean, the, the point is to be a prod, to get people to act. And then the property owners who are recalcitrant have measures. Gemma?
Gemma Seymour, District Eight, and also Brattleboro Planning Commission now. I was not part of any of the discussion around this ordinance, although I fully support the idea of the ordinance. I have two major objections to it. The first is that the fee schedule is almost nothing. It, it's really not going to have much effect at all. It would take four and a half years for the fee schedule to even reach the $10,000. The, well, four years to, to reach the $8,000 mark and an additional year to reach 13,000. It's nowhere near punitive enough to get people to move on properties. They can sit there for five years and, you know, having paid $20,000, something like that, to retain a property that could be very much more valuable than that. Which brings me to my second objection. And that is that the, the fee schedule is in no way related to the actual assessed value of the property, and I believe that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, those are interesting questions. Do you, do you have any comments?
No, we, we kind of looked around at how fees were modeled. So, I, I think that tying it to the assessment is not something we saw. We'd have to look further into that.
So it might be a matter of rolling this out, see how it goes, and see if, you know, you can come before us and say, gosh, Gemma was right on. Let's up these numbers. Or, you know, they're, whatever it is, it can be looked at after it's rolled out.
If I may. I would just like to add to that, that I am in support of the ordinance and this is better than nothing. So, if it passes the way it is, that's fine. I just think we ought to keep in mind in the future that it's probably not enough and that I think it should be tied to the assessed value. Thank you.
That's an interesting idea. Thank you. Frick, and then Ivan.
Frick Bright, District Nine Rep. I am curious what kind of research-
Ask your question to me, not Sue.
My question is for her.
Yes, but this is a Select Board meeting and you direct your questions to the board.
The question is whether there has been any research done as to why people have chosen or not been able to occupy their properties. And another question is the, both the efficacy and legality of what effectively is taking property because people are choosing or to not occupy it or are unable to, for whatever reason. And, and third question is, who decides whether they are, if they're choosing to market it, which should be a personal choice, or whether they're choosing to market it at a reasonable price? So those are three questions, and then I have some follow-on comments.
All right. So, you've asked some rather psychological questions about real estate actions that I don't think that the, our planning director has investigated. She's investigated the history and, and other towns that they've chosen to do. Sue, would you like to opine on Mr. Sprite's questions?
Well, to your first one, I mean, only, you know, we've had some conversations. So some residential properties are sitting vacant because they basically, you know, there's been deaths in the family and nobody wants to pick it up. And it's just sitting there because nobody wants to touch it. So there's handful that are like that.
And so you'd call that maybe dormancy?
Yeah.
Are those people going to get punished for having death in the family?
That's what the fee schedule's all about. Frick?
Yeah, yeah. Clean it up and sell it, because somebody else might want to.
Yeah. And then the other questions?
So, in terms, yeah, so that was the first one. The second one had to do about making judgments about reasonable sale prices. That's actually listed in the ordinance. There's a couple of ways about, you know, I don't want to read them all, but it is in the ordinance.
Looking at comparables or something like that, Sue?
Yeah, and comparison to the property tax assessment value. Getting a, getting a appraiser's valuation is one way. You know, have you been reducing the price in a certain amount of time? Those are kind of things that are taken into account in the ordinance. And I'm sorry, I don't recall the third.
What was your third question, Frick?
I've forgotten at this point.
All right.
I just, I, I just want to say this, I, I appreciate the planning department's desire to sort of help guide our development of Brattleboro. But there is a point where I feel like we're stepping all over property rights and the right of people, private owners, to do or not do as they please with their properties. And especially not doing. I mean, you know, there is, there is something to be said for having, you know, some rules and guidance as to how one might develop a property appropriately. But if it's already developed and someone chooses not to do something with it, that, that seems like a huge overstep. And it also feels like, I mean, as, I'm, I'm not the only property owner and housing provider who is a little distressed by the punitive nature of many of the public policy approaches to especially rental housing. I mean, it feels like the, you know, the whippings will continue until the morale improves. I think this is yet another way to discourage people from becoming housing providers. And I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, when this is going to start being applied to vacant land as well as buildings. Is that in the offing next? I mean, this, this-
Okay, thank you, Frick.
Feels like an insane step. I'm sorry.
Now, let me just say that the vacant land issue was discussed and rejected when this project was first to the board. And I think generally the commentary when this was discussed and the intent of the ordinance is exactly the opi-, opposite of what you stated. This goal is to get vacant and non-secured property secured and/or developed. And if, if they don't wish to develop it, they can maintain it and, and follow the, the rules here. But the goal is for essentially dilapidated and unsecured properties to rectify that condition.
I feel if, just weighing in on that, when we were developing this ordinance, right in the center of the bullseye was the Sportsman's Lounge.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's not forget that. That's sort of-
You described it as punitive, and I believe Home Depot was included, not less, which is-
No. The Home Depot is secured and follows the rules. Oscar, do you have a comment?
Yes. I, it's probably worth saying that the ordinance was already approved and we're just doing the fee schedule and the appointment of the officer today. I do remember your third question, and just to cover the bases, I think it was about, is this legal? I assume there was some review done, that this has been applied in other places. I don't know if it survived a legal challenge or not, but it certainly hasn't been struck down by the legal system. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it's based on, largely based on a model ordinance from the Vermont Leagues, League of Cities and Towns. Bob has reviewed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ivan, you're standing. Yeah, would you like to speak?
Ivan Hennessy, District Eight. Thank you. I'm sorry if this is clear to everyone else if I, if I missed something. Two circumstances that I'd like clarification on. One is properties in probate, are they subject to this same process? And does the clock restart with a transaction? So if a property has been, you know, subject to these fees and it gets sold and then sits for three months, is that just three months of being abandoned or empty or whatever? Or is that, is that already part of, is it continuing to be empty, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask.
Thank you, Ivan. Ivan's asked two interesting questions. Sue, do you, do you know the answer to the probate question or the restart question?
So if it's, if it's actively, I, I actually don't know enough about the probate process, so I don't feel comfortable commenting on that right now. Because I think that there, some of these properties are stuck in probate because nobody wants to step forward. So I, I can't really speak to your first question. I'd have to get back to you on that. To the second one, sorry, it just went out of my head.
Oh, about, if there's a sale, does it restart the clock? And I think it does.
Yes, if a sale, if there is a sale, that would restart the clock with, with the new property owner.
Yeah. Great. Oscar, did you have a comment before I hear from more?
Yes, just, my understanding also was that probably like most things in town, what will actually happen is it'll start a conversation with the building owner. So it's not just going to be a ticket nailed to your door. It's going to be, hey, what is this? And then there's, I would imagine there'd be some latitude of like, okay, if you do this, you'll be fine, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we envision it as, I mean, the, the way that we'll roll this out is mid-August, we will send a letter to the properties that we've identified that have been sitting for, vacant for more than six months. And letting them know of their obligation to register, we'll have the permit process. obligation to register. We'll have the permit process online. And, I mean, we think that will open up the conversation. Somebody might say no, and then that will start it.
Good point. Mr. DeGray.
Thank you, Dick DeGray. First question is, when would a lien kick in to make sure that we do get payment once fines are starting to be assessed? And I would disagree with something that I heard a few minutes ago is that I don't think this is about landowner rights. This is about blighted property and safety hazards which do nothing for the community as a whole. And also, I do believe, I understand that we want to see how this goes before we do raise the fee up, but I definitely believe that the fee should be much higher. Money is a certain deterrent to make us do something. And there's certainly people that own these properties that are pocket-rich. And so if you don't want to do anything, then you're going to pay us. And putting the, hopefully the lien goes on the property right away because other than that, I'm not sure how we're going to track down our money if the property is sold and we don't have a lien on it. So if you could answer that question, I'd appreciate it. And again, I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Yes. I, I note that our previous discussions have been all about the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Sue, Dick's question about the lien.
Yeah. The lien would be part of the court action. So I think it would be what we'd be requesting, you know, we'd request, we'd be requesting relief through the demolition and then placing a lien equal to the costs incurred after that demolition to secure the property. So I don't think it's been envisioned that we would just put a lien on it to take over the building. Really what we're trying to do is secure the property, reduce the blight. So demolition would be one way to do that.
So I guess my follow-up would be, is you're assessed $1,000 fine the first year, you do nothing. So that fine's in place. The next year goes to 2,000. So why, I guess, why wouldn't we be placing a lien on the property to get the money, to make sure that we're going to get the money if they decide to sell the property in the third year? We should have a lien on the property to make sure that we, we do receive the fine, that we are, I don't need, I don't think we should be waiting. If we're assessing a fine, then you put the lien on the property. That way you're at least guaranteed to get your money. I would, I would hope that that's what we would be doing, our first step. If you initiate a fine, then initiate the lien.
Thank you. Sue, you'll look at the timing and all that.
I'll have to speak to the town attorney on that.
Sue, Belleville, did you have a comment?
Susan Belleville, Brattleboro. Yeah, I can speak a little bit about liens and what happens. So if you put a lien on the property and there's a mortgage holder, 99% of the time, the mortgage holder will force that owner to take care of that lien, to remove it because their interests are now jeopardized, particularly around a municipal lien. However, if they don't have a mortgage, the only way to make sure that you're going to see your money is to put a lien on the property in a speedy manner before they can circumvent the process and sell it and nobody knows what's going on behind the scenes. I'm not sure of how municipal fines are handled with regard to title. If they're recorded in some fashion in the land records, that would also be another way to capture the assessed fines or penalties that are not tied directly to a formal process. If someone is assessed a penalty for something, then if the municipal bill is recorded in the land records, that will be found at the time of title search. So someone can't circumvent the paying the bill at the time of a sale.
Thank you, Susan. All right.
Do we know, pardon?
We'll look into that.
Yeah. Great. So any more comments? Rick? I'll give you a minute because I think it's the.
You just let her speak again. So I don't know why you're, I mean, just because you don't like what I have been saying is not a reason to.
No. Because Susan had just a follow-up, a quick follow-up, and I'm giving you that same courtesy.
Okay. But not in such courteous fashion. Thank you very much. So I would urge you, I mean, I've gotten a sense of which way the wind is blowing, but I'm hoping that some of you at least will be willing to put, punt this downwind a little bit and have further conversations before you go down a punitive path rather than what I would consider a constructive and community-oriented path.
Thank you. So we've had two people, myself and Oscar, mention that the bulk of this discussion has already been approved by the previous select board. And we are here to approve the schedule and appoint this zoning administrator. We've had a motion. I forget who raised it. Mr. Case. So are we ready to vote? Great. All select board members in favor of?
Do you need to read the motion?
Oh, yeah, I guess I should.
Don't help us.
Let's see. We move to approve the revised vacant building fee schedule as submitted and to appoint Brian Bannon, zoning administrator, as the building safety officer. All select board members in favor of these two motions, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 5-0. All right. Thank you, Sue. Thank you very much. Fire Department's quarterly report.
Yes. We invite Assistant Chief Simons, Assistant Chief Kier, and EMS Superintendent Fritz to the table.
Great.
Thank you guys for waiting so long.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Did we have a choice?
Well, I think it's, it's nice to see the matching shirts, but I think we also, now that Billy's here at the table, we can congratulate him again for his award.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, take it away.
All right. So everybody's time is valuable. We took our nine-page document and we kind of summarized it. So we can get this through us a little quicker and just kind of hit the key highlights off our memo. So emergency response, we ran in this quarter a total of 1,371 fire and EMS alarms for an average of 15 per day. This reflects continued growth in the community needs and the department responsiveness. Union engagement, we delivered CPR, fire extinguisher training, participated in public events such as touch a truck, gallery walk, school visits, and others, and provided extra staffing during large gatherings. Received community praise for compassionate and professional care. Fire suppression highlights, we responded to nine significant fire events, including mutual aid for structure and brush fires in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Some staffing updates, so Captain Dave Emery will be retiring on July 30th after 25 years of service to the fire department. We have a new hire, paramedic Sean Garland, who joined us on July 7th. He's going through his training and orientation process now. Current vacancies, we have two lieutenant vacancies, one fire alarm superintendent, three firefighters with two conditional offers accepted. We have one firefighter on light duty doing injury with an unknown return date at this time. Under EMS operations, we've completed our first full year as a transporting EMS agency. This quarter, we did 882 EMS responses, 873 patients were evaluated. The top conditions were injuries, pain, psychiatric issues, respiratory distress, and overdoses. We had an unannounced state inspection, which we passed with flying colors, no issues. They're typically done every two years when we get recertified. This was, they just walked in and said, hey, we're here to inspect you today. So there was no preparation than, other than our normal daily preparation. Our EMS financial performance, so total payments received, $1.15 million. Total EMS cost for the fiscal year, this is for the whole fiscal year, was $1.14 million. The net cost of, to provide EMS services was $241,551.57. I went back to 2021 and 2022, the last two times that we paid contracted EMS service, and that was $266,000 in 2021, $285,000 in 2022. Reimbursed, exceeded budgeted target by over $62,000, excluding that $250,000 startup fund. Billing reimbursement, we've established with all major insurers, working through the remaining Medicaid plans. There's 23 claims, roughly $84,000 pending, with an expected $29,000, $29.500 in additional revenue to come in still. EFT payments streamlined for faster reimbursement. This past year has been nothing short of transformative for the EMS operations of the Brattleboro Fire Department. With strategic planning, strong clinical execution, and relentless commitment from our members and partners, we've exceeded our goals in both care delivery and financial sustainability. We are deeply grateful to our community and town leadership and all supporting agencies who have made this progress possible. Under fire prevention, so fiscal year '25 highlights, 82 apartment buildings, approximately 600 units underwent initial inspections. 106 joint inspections with the Vermont Division of Fire Safety were completed, including complaints, new construction in progress inspections. 65 health complaint inspections were conducted. Nearly 50% reduction in fires in apartment buildings, three, more than three units, from 11 fires in 2022 to six in 2025. Our rental housing revenue, so we collected $33,300. We were short from projections by $22,950. These are, these estimates are based on approximately 750 apartments per zone across four zones. Delinquencies and billing enforcement and inspection capacity contribute to the shortfall from that. BFD news and accomplishments, in May, all BFD members participated in a live fire training in Sunderland, Massachusetts. The drill is based on real incidents focused on initial company operations and communication and controlled live fire environment, critical for situational awareness and professional growth. Individual achievements, firefighter Chase Ivey completed Fire Officer One. Firefighter Nick Audette completed Fire Instructor. Firefighter Andrew Hole completed IFF hazardous materials technician program. Firefighter Foley earned advanced EMT certification. And Lieutenant Hubbard, firefighter Martin, Office Manager Martin, became certified passenger safety car seat technicians. Future goals, continuing to expand provider certification and clinical training opportunities, finalizing preparations for the launch of the PREVENT program, maintaining strong collaboration with community partners through situation table, community or project care, and adult care coordination meetings.
And we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention that what we approved in, on consent was receiving a grant from the opioid settlement committee for Billy Fritz's program. Is that called the PREVENT? Is that what that is, Billy?
No, the PREVENT program is a state initiative where we would administer buprenorphine after an overdose reversal for someone exhibiting clinical signs of withdrawal. So that is a separate program. The opioid settlement funding would be for community education on Narcan, CPR, first aid, stop the bleed, training for that.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions other than to say, good job. Do other select board members have questions and comments?
Thank you.
Oscar?
Yeah, I also thank you guys and thank you for this report, which I love. Just two quick, well, a quick note again, and I keep harping on this because I think it's such good news. We are, the 899 in EMS reimbursement that backs out the 250K actually undershoots. That, that number is much better than it seems because we didn't have any FY24 money coming in in the first couple of months. So I'm even more, I'm still really optimistic about next year and this is going really well. And thank you all for all your work on this. And then I had one question about the vacancies. I was just curious what the experience has been. Does it seem difficult to hire? Are we having trouble being competitive or is it just a sort of a slower process?
Kind of, kind of all three. So, you know, there was a time in the fire service where the line was out the door. Like you'd be lucky to get a fire service job. That line's much shorter now. And we do, you know, we work really hard to make sure that we vet our candidates so that we have the, the right people for the right positions. And that process does take time. So it takes, you know, the hiring process takes 30 to 60 days between the initial interview, an oral board, the testing process, and then the final selection. From there, you know, depending on their experience level, the orientation takes another, you know, six months to a year to get them fully on the line operation.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I'd love to ask a little bit more about patients that decline treatment or transport. Is that comparable to other communities of the, so responded to 882 EMS calls, evaluated 873 patients, 114 patients declined treatment and/or transport. What does that look like in the moment?
Yeah. I'll take a stab at that, then Billy can add whatever he would like. So it, it's very common. And as EMS has really progressed, we provide a lot more kind of in-home care. So, you know, 911s is utilized for everything. And these can be, you know, I've done things like somebody calls 911 to because they're, they're too hot in their apartment. And we open a window and put a fan in the window. They're like, okay, I'm good now. You know, they can be service calls for, I need help hooking up my oxygen or I ran out of oxygen. I need help with that. So they don't all necessarily facilitate a transport to the hospital. They just don't need that level of service. So there's a lot of things that we do on the scene. Another scenario that happens often is there'll be a third party that calls for an ambulance, but the, the person they called for doesn't actually want the ambulance. So as long as they can make that decision and they say, we don't want you, then they sign a piece of paper and we leave. So those are some situations that, that would occur.
Yeah.
Billy, you want to throw anything in there?
No, I would agree. There's also many of our overdoses. After they have either received bystander Narcan or we have received Narcan, or we have administered Narcan to them, sometimes they'll decline treatment and transport as well. That's really where the PREVENT program, I think, has a great hook to be able to help some of those people who don't get transported to the hospital but still are experiencing issues after a substance use disorder overdose.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, for your department's service to our community. And I wanted to highlight the fact that, and I may have mentioned this at a previous meeting, that despite the fact that you have seen a significantly, significant increase in total EMS calls, you've decreased the, the response times under four minutes. You've gotten that down. And I know that, you know, a minute or can make a big difference in someone's survival. So really appreciate your, your work on that.
Thank you.
Good point. All right. Let's open it up to the public. Are there people from the public who'd like to speak? I see Mr. DeGray and then Ms. Fisher.
I was going to ask these couple of questions during the budget process, but since you're here in person, I said I'll save them for you. You gave such a detailed report on the EMS collections. Can you give me a close guesstimate as to where you are at the end of the year for overtime? And then total expenditures for overtime? And then something that really caught my eye was training, which is budgeted at $30,000. And at the end of May, you've only spent $6,000. I found that to be a little bit odd that only a small portion of your training budget had been spent.
So I, I have a question for your question. When you asked about overtime, are you looking for the total EMS overtime or the total fire department overtime? department overtime?
Because it's home overtime in the budget, it's not...
That's, that's a firefighter item.
Yeah, okay. I don't have that number in front of me, so I, if I had the budget in front of me, I could, I could tell you. So I don't, I can't answer that one right now. What was the second question? I'm sorry.
Training.
Oh, training budget. Okay, training budget.
Training, that insignificant amount of money has not been spent on training.
I'm going to defer that one to AC, just because I wasn't here for the whole year, and I don't really feel comfortable answering that question.
Let me just note that there has been training, and perhaps it has been more affordable than the budget indicates.
Yeah, you're 100% accurate, Liz. And a lot of times what we do is utilize training grants and opportunities from Vermont EMS and through the Division of Fire Safety, and utilize our, our training sources, resources where we can get free training. And that's largely where you see that budget line not spent.
Thank you. Heidi.
Heidi Fisher, District Seven. I too had similar questions to Dick, so you may not be able to answer all of them, but I had another part to it. I noticed in that, first of all, these numbers look great, so glad to have them. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In the May '25 fiscal year budget piece that we were looking at earlier, it says overtime was $593,365. And in the fire quarterly report, which was the whole year, if I got that right, it said personnel was $877,933. And I wondered, does that include overtime, that number? It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. And, and then I was also going to ask how that breaks out for EMS versus fire, but it sounds like you don't have those numbers.
Heidi, I'm not sure that they're able to answer that question.
Right, that one I heard him just say. Yeah. But that, that personnel number does include overtime.
Overtime, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there other members of the public who wish to speak? Is there anyone online? Anyone else from the board want to say anything other than our thanks? Thank you, gentlemen. Always a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to motion that one?
Was there a motion?
If you want to accept the...
Uh-oh.
Don't worry.
Uh-oh.
Sit back down.
Hold that down.
We'll sit back.
Yeah, Peter, save me.
All right. I'll motion to accept the Fire Department's Quarterly Report for FY25, Quarter Four, as presented.
Great. All select board members in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Now, thank you, gentlemen. I think that's it, unless there's one more motion that we need. Isaac?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Great. Isaac has moved to adjourn the meeting. All select board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And that's 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's great. I think it was, too.
This goes with the documents.